Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is five thirty-two P M. We're here for the regular session of the Copel City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first first-floor conference room. At the conclusion of the executive session, I will come out and announce open work session, at which time the public will be welcome to join us. Thank you.
All right, everybody, the time is six fifteen P. M. We're going to move into work session. We've got three items on the agenda tonight. First item is discussion regarding agenda items. I do have one. Item number nine is a public hearing. The applicant has asked to have that one deferred until the December fourteenth meeting. So I will open the public hearing and I would like to request that someone to, for a motion to continue the public hearing to December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I move.
No, wait. We need to do it out there.
I want the room meeting to happen now. Was it December what?
December fourteenth. Any questions on any of the agenda items?
That was the one I had a question on. So I'll just put my question.
Probably not in good position to answer. There you go. Warning is given, Jim's going to be really well prepared.
On eleven? Can I ask a question?
May.
Is that phased? It looked like they were with the office lot two, retail lot three, but then like the office lot two, the retail lot three, the renderings looked suspiciously identical.
We'll let Matt answer that one.
Okay.
All right. So phase one is the lot one, the office warehouse.
Okay.
And then future phase would be the other two that are off of one twenty-one.
So when were they put in the pond and all the?
That would be with the first phase.
It would be, okay. Okay, that's the way it looked. I'm sorry if I was dense and didn't pick up on that in the materials, but. And are the reason that the lot two and lot three are just identical is because they really don't have?
Correct, yeah. It's purely conceptual at this point.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. During the public service announcement, I plan to give a very brief highlight or overview of our trip to Encore's power control. I don't even know what to call it there.
Operations Center.
Operations Center.
District Operations Center.
Thank you.
OpsN.
EDOC.
Encore OpsN.
And if anybody wants to add in, you're welcome to join in.
Pool tour.
What's that?
It was.
Any other comments on the agenda tonight?
I was going to have a comment on the proclamation.
Do you want to, you want to, okay, I will be happy to call on you.
At the time, yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else want to comment on our municipal court week, which was last week?
Thank you for all of this, Jim.
I will.
All right. Thank you for letting me know. I forgot to ask. Okay, let's move on to item B. We are being challenged. Well, I'm going to let Lieutenant Cody Johns bring this one up. Item B is a presentation by the Salvation Army regarding the Red Kettle Campaign. And Lieutenant Johns, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it.
By the way, this guy's been twisting my arm for the better part of two months.
And I apologize, but you're going to be very excited for what I have to share. So good evening, my name is Lieutenant Cody Johns, and I am the current commanding officer of the Salvation Army here in Irving, Texas. Just a little bit about me, I'm a proud dad of four children that attend Capella ISD. I have three that go to West and one that's a graduating senior this year in the twenty-twenty-four class. They're active in all football, basketball, lacrosse, band, choir, and multiple clubs. So there's never a dull moment in the family. But I do want to say I can personally attest that my wife and I would not be the people we are today if it wasn't for the Salvation Army providing a hand up to our family in a time of crisis more than ten years ago. And I know that we can all agree that these past couple of years have been some of the hardest we've faced as a nation. But this holiday season, the Salvation Army is showing that love exists beyond most difficult situations. And I appreciate the offer to be here tonight and to share how you can join us. In a given year, the North Texas is more than a In a given year, the North Texas more than eleven point six million meals are served to the hungry. We have thirteen Salvation Army locations across North Texas with five in Dallas County. And last month, out of the Dallas County Salvation Army locations alone, nine thousand one hundred and thirty-nine individuals were fed through our food pantries. More than five hundred and twenty nights of shelter have been provided, and more than nine million dollars in financial assistance has been provided to help thirty thousand individuals and families facing poverty, addiction, and homelessness navigate their crisis to get their lives back on track. So through all our food side pantries, emergency rental assistance and utility assistance programs, financial education programs, children and youth programs, implement weather shelters, Christmas assistance, and spiritual community support, we continue to bring relief to the families facing some of the most challenging times. This year is our love beyond Christmas. A lot of people say, wow, you only do things during Christmas, but we don't. We do it January through December. And it's our holiday theme and our commitment to provide hope and to help our neighbors in a need three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The campaign is based on scripture from First Peter, chapter four, verse eight, which says, above all, love. And this is a reminder to love all others beyond all else. So how can we help? And with our red kettles, well, I'm really glad you asked that question just now. This year, our kettle goal for the Salvation Army of North Texas is one point five million. But the Salvation Army here in Irving is goal is sixty-six thousand to continue to move and help people around the North Texas area. So I'm challenging you, Capella City, to challenge against the mayor of Irving and the city council, also involving the mayor of South Lake and their council, and also Grapevine to do a challenge. And this challenge is, we would love for you, if you agree, we would love for y'all to ring the bell on December the ninth. We would, it'd be on a Saturday. We'd all work on getting the shifts to ring from ten to seven. And then we can also add a virtual red kettle, which we've been adding where you can, we give you a Q R code, you send that Q R code to wherever somebody's at, and they can donate it and it comes right to you. And so you might be asking, well, what can you get out of this? The winner of this, I've actually bought a nice, good-sized golden bell on a plaque, and it's gonna be engraved to whoever wins. So whoever wins out of these four mayors, it will be presented to you at one of the city councils in front of everybody, and then you can brag to all the other places that y'all are better than they are. So I think it's a nice time to really to raise funds to help our community, but still getting to challenge the other city officials and get to have that bragging rights. And the last thing I want to share is our ultimate goal is to make a significant impact on the lives of individuals in our community and across North Texas, the funds raised with these programs. Your designated location for this will be at the Kroger on Sandy Lake. It's a great place. I ring there last year. It's very wealth and friendly. I just love bringing there. And we'll break the days into shifts, making the service really easy into three-hour shifts. And so I sincerely hope that you all join us and put love above all else and show families in need that love exists beyond the most difficult situations. Thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Jim?
So where would the kettle be set up for us?
Yes, so at the Kroger on Sandy Lake, out there in the stand, the sign, the kettle. I'll bring everything. I'll bring the nice little red bells, so y'all can ring those. I even have some nice-looking aprons too for you.
Yeah, I just hope the lights are in place by the way. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Did you?
So we did one last year or year before in, at Market Street. I did that. Was it part of this challenge?
It was, I don't know that it was part of this one, but it was similar. That one, I think, was a challenge by the Louisville Mayor T J Gilmore.
Oh, okay.
And he won, by the way.
Sounds like we gotta step our game on.
Yeah, I know. So the only question I have, you said a three-hour shift. There's nine hours. We've got seven of us on, or eight of us, actually.
Right.
Can we do less than a three-hour shift?
You can do that however you all want to plan it out. If you just let me know, I'm more than happy to help out in any way that.
You're flexible on that.
Ah, yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, voluntary, obviously, I'll send out a, or Ashley can. Volunteer Ashley.
Voluntarily, Ashley's going to send out.
Yeah, voluntarily, Ashley will send out a signup list and we'll see what we come up with, so.
Yeah, I like it.
All right.
And just to let you know, don't tell anybody else, but I'm really rooting for y'all, because I live in Capella and so, just don't tell anybody else that.
We need, we need your secrets.
All right, I'll tell you. You get the music going, I'll tell you right now, you get music going, you dance, you get the two bells, you don't, no one stands a chance.
Kevin, you're up there for nine hours.
Yeah. Millions.
Let's see if I got a, I think I've got a Marshall or something.
Thank you for that.
No, thank you so much for y'all's time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You didn't tell me you lived in Capella when you first called me, so.
I know I didn't. So my kids, I'm like on the bright edge line, so it's like weird how the lines are divided. So I'm like in, like half, like kind of valley range and half in Capella, so it's.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, item C is a discussion regarding the water sewer rate study.
Before Matthew and Jerry get started, there's just a couple of things I want to touch base with on as y'all are listening. The first is that over the last multiple years, when we've had these drought situations in basically June, July, and August, or July, August, and September, y'all know that we have, we have massively stressed over water conservation, right? In terms of how we manage our water. To be clear, what we were managing to wasn't because we didn't have the water. We were managing it in order to control the cost to the best of our ability.
So when we up to the particular level, one of the things, because we are a large user, we cut back on watering our parks and green spaces and those kinds of things, right? We do our part. To put all that in perspective, the question was asked, I think it was by Councilmember Carol, you know, about how much does it cost us to, if you want to use the word recoup or to refurbish or to bring our parks back, you know, from what we do? It costs us about seventy-five thousand dollars a year. While we cut back on water, then we also are cutting back on usage and the sports teams aren't getting ready, you know, can't go out and do it, so it's a quality of life issue, plus there is a cost issue. To put that in perspective, D W U would charge us about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year annually for a million gallons. So every half million gallons, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, right? So what you're gonna hear tonight is what we've included in the rate analysis is the first million gallons for next year, the additional million gallons. And the second year, I believe, and they can correct me, the next half million gallons. The way that we did that, though, is that we built it in, not to the base, so that all the customers, we built it into the higher tier. So if you're gonna use water at a higher tier, and they'll explain what that is, you're just gonna pay more for the water, right? So it's taking the concept of conservation, if you want to use the water, whether you're a commercial or residential customer, okay, but you're gonna help pay for this additional cost in that rate, right? So they're gonna talk about that. So I just want y'all to have that in the back of your mind as you're going through this presentation. And then when you start asking some questions, just understand how that's working, because there are some recommendations at the end, because we do need to get in front of you with, you know, an update on our rates, okay? Any questions on that? All right, now I present to Jerry Young.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jerry Young, and I'm the business analyst within Strategic Financial Engagement. And tonight, I'm gonna walk you through this brief agenda we have. Thank you. So I will be doing the introduction, and then we will have NewGen lead us through the results of their rate study and the recommendations. And then from there, I will be presenting the next steps. So with the introduction, as discussed in the budget workshops in July, the Water Sewer Fund is a enterprise fund, meaning that the, that the costs, meaning that the revenue generated must cover the cost of providing the service. Costs include Dallas Water Utility, who provide drinking water to the city, and Trinity River Authority, who treats our sewer. In addition, the revenue of the fund should account for maintaining the cost of water sewer infrastructure, as well as any capital costs. The costs are covered by the revenue generated from the water sewer rates, which are approved by council. The Water Sewer Fund does not receive any funding from sales tax or property tax. And tonight, we're seeking direction regarding the water sewer rates. So the rate study is before you now, because we implemented the tiered rate structure back in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Then we began the process to have winter averaging implemented by fiscal year twenty twenty-three. One of the guiding principles of the Water Sewer Fund is the customer experience. The aim is to implement items one at a time to allow the customers an opportunity to adjust. We mentioned during the July budget workshop that we would review the water sewer rates, which brings us here today. The extremely qualified NewGen, led by Matthew Garrett, will walk you through the results of their rate study. NewGen is a first-time partner reviewing the city's water sewer rates, which provide the benefit of fresh eyes to ensure that the city is adequately setting rates to support the operations of the city's water sewer system. So with that, I will turn it over to Matthew Garrett.
All right, howdy, Mayor and Council. My name is Matthew Garrett with NewGen Strategies and Solutions. A little bit about our firm, I won't give you the full commercial, but we are a management economic consulting firm. We operate in a number of states, so we have a nationwide presence. Quick stats, we have projects in over thirty-three states, America Samoa, and a couple other fun destinations I don't get to go to. But I do lead our water practice currently. On this project with me was Steve Dug. We were lucky to pick him up last year. Steve Dug came to us with ten years of UK consulting for governments in the UK, living here in the States for a while, and we're glad he got to work with your staff. To that end, as Jerry said, we've been working with your team now for several months, so a big kudos to them for putting up with all of our deep dive questions. Certainly Regina and Jerry have been instrumental, not to mention the leadership that was in the room to help derive these results. So with that, and I think as Mr. Land teed it up, obviously, we have Trinity River Authority increases, we have Dallas Water Utility increases, we have future capital improvement projects. These are no different than necessarily your budgeting annual process, but on a five-year horizon, we factored in all of the increases we can expect. We also put in a little bit of a capital structure where you're going to cash fund some of the capital. And what we have for you is a rate plan and how that shakes out. The rig revenue requirement, sort of a fancy word in our vernacular, that just says, how much do we really need from the rates? I do algebra for a living, and as a result, I'm solving for a variable. That variable is the rates of the water and wastewater rates. You'll see, to make sure I haven't over-recovered, we take your other revenues, that red bar, and the yellow, which in the first year of twenty-four is actually a reimbursement resolution, that, so that's actually a negative or an offset to the total we need in twenty-four. You'll see that we have programmed in future cash capital projects on the yellow at the top. Most notably, the green and the blue are your wholesale providers. You'll see in the bullet to the right, of the cost increases, almost sixty percent of that increase over time is coming from your wholesale providers. Last bullet is pretty critical. Your current rates are insufficient. We can't stay here effectively, kind of the burning platform, so what will we do about it? As Mr. Land suggested, we've got some rates where we have not vastly changed the rate design. Again, you worked with Willdan, I believe, so you have a really good rate design as it sits. You have your meter equivalency, so you're charging more as the meters get larger. You also have an inclining block rate structure, which does something to encourage conservation. That said, the steps are pretty muted. They're not really large steps on the residential side. Commercial has a flat rate for all volumes over one thousand, and you do have a separate commercial irrigation and residential class that currently pay the same. Lastly, don't want to gloss over, but the senior and disabled customers, I did call it out here, are still paying ninety percent. We aren't recommending a change to that. There it is. On the sewer side, you have a pretty simple structure. Unlike water, there's no reason to put an inclining block rate. You're not trying to conserve. And so you have a uniform rate right now that applies to residential and commercial, similarly, at twenty-two forty and two twenty-four per thousand gallons. On the residential side, you do have the winter average applied. On commercial, that wouldn't be the case. So the way this shakes out in comparison, you'll see, working from the top left, this is your residential five-eighth inch customer. This is your typical customer. At a nine thousand or so, this makes up over ninety percent of your customer type. Seven thousand represents the winter usage. So in the winter, when there's seven thousand gallons of water usage and seven thousand on average in your winter average, you're paying in that bottom third of the comparator list, and you'll see on your average annual usage in the next chart, you're actually at the bottom of the list, paying the least for your average consumption. So too, at the twenty thousand, you're right next to the bottom, and that actually represents your peak average. So during those months where we water the most, that's the average per residential customer. At the bottom left, you'll see commercial, a two-inch, this is a representative average. The two-inch customer with sixty-five thousand gallons of consumption is paying the lowest out of your comparative group by a pretty big sum. And then irrigation, second from the bottom. So the way we addressed this, we looked at it, and in those comparisons, we noted something. We noted that commercial is putting an impact on our system and may not be paying their fair share by comparison. As a result, our first action item was to look at what rate changes would we make to make commercial more comparable to the market surrounding us. Secondly, we had rate increases coming from Dallas Water Utility. Those will be passed on to all customers. But for additional capacity, as Mr. Land referenced, we have put those on the higher-tier water users, because we only need that capacity during peak periods. We're only planning to collect that from peak users. Does that make sense? Heading on, it's fantastic. We still have to make some adjustments, because even if we weren't adding additional capacity with Dallas, there are increases we need to absorb. So there are increases to your residential customer class for their base level of service, so too on T R A. So as an outcome, and the way we managed getting the revenue you need from the rate structure you have, we made a few changes. One, we went up slightly on the average rate. Additionally, you'll see the highlights, that bottom tier for residential, we made that a two-times factor. Currently, it's a one point two-five. You'll see the step up from three thirteen to three ninety-two is a one point two-five factor. So to encourage and send the price signal that we need for that additional water from Dallas, we have increased the twenty-five thousand and up on irrigation and on residential. Also noteworthy on this slide, we did move the residential irrigation class from common with the irrigation customer to common with the residential customer. The reason we did that is many of your residents may have a single meter doing both. And so we actually have matched the twenty-five thousand plus to send a price signal on the residential irrigation meter, by giving them the benefit of the rest of the structure that they enjoy on the residential side. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry, that did not.
Fair enough. So a residential irrigation customer currently is aligned with the commercial irrigation class. So if they were on the right, and we left them there, from zero to twenty-five thousand gallons, they would pay three seventy-seven per unit.
Now, you're talking about a resident, residential irrigation that has a separate meter?
Yes, sir.
For irrigation?
Yes, sir.
How many of those do we have?
Seventy-five-ish. Thank you.
Seventy-five out of fourteen thousand?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. So as a result, we, it's not a big change, but it puts them on par with the residents that actually have the same water service through a single meter, and they're also paying the minimum charge to boot. So we thought that was an appropriate and minor change while we're there in the ordinance, so we're recommending the staff bring an ordinance to you later that does just that.
Excuse us, Doc. Clarify, you said that's commercial irrigation. So what's residential irrigation then?
So it's where they have a standard domestic meter serving inside their dwellings, but they also have a separate irrigation meter at the property for the residents.
Okay.
That's why we have so few of them. You don't have many.
Okay, I thought that was commercial irrigation. I thought you just said they were putting that in commercial irrigation.
Yes, sir, yeah. So one thing to note, and again, I didn't call it out or circle it in red. As it stands, your current ordinance and rate structure has them the same. So you'll see that the residential and commercial irrigation are paying similar rates. So you'll see that the residential and commercial irrigation are paying similar rates because they're both irrigation class.
But that's only with respect to the residential irrigation as a separate meter?
Yes, sir. Only those seventy-five accounts? Correct.
So the recommended change is to split them?
Effectively, just to bring the residential irrigation in line with residential?
Okay. I thought you said the other direction.
Oh, no, sir, I apologize.
You were taking it to the commercial irrigation.
Oh, no, sir. All right, so these are the proposed water rate structures. Any other questions there? That's one of the larger moves. Yes, sir.
So the references to the inches, that's just the diameter of the water pipe that's servicing the location?
Yes, sir. Right.
And the volumetric charge will apply equally to those different inlets?
Yes, sir. Right, because the demand relative to the diameter of the pipe is represented, there's a meter equivalency table promulgated by AWWA, that's the American Waterworks Association. I did in fact check that, but I know Mr. Garrett could probably tell you if this is exactly that number. But this is representative of a best practice. The guidebook on rate setting is technically the M1, and so we always check that. This is consistent with that practice.
Do we know how many people or how many households exceed twenty-five thousand gallons on the residential side?
As a raw count, I may have that data handy.
Yeah, I mean, it's give or take.
Yes, sir. So I've got about fifteen percent of your bills exceeding twenty-five thousand gallons on the residential class.
So that would be people that have one meter for both inside the house and their irrigation?
It would include them? Yes, sir. And it would not include your residential irrigation class, because I do still consider them a separate type of customer, even though their rates will be similar to the residential customer. That said, that's the count of bills, not actually the representative count of customers, right? Because if each person at the table has twelve bills, and one or several of you are up over twenty-five consistently, you may only be fifteen percent of the total. So these are twenty, this is fifteen percent of the total bills, right? Not necessarily fifteen percent of your customer group.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just for clarity. Yes, sir. Any other questions on this change to accommodate both the increases we need for the current capacities and the change to those top two tiers to accommodate the additional Dallas water capacity? Seeing none. On the wastewater side, we do have a pretty sizable increase from TRA. We have passed that on, not uniformly. Again, akin to the water, we are putting a little bit more of our cost on commercial. This is to bring them into alignment with our comparator group. So we have about an eight-and-a-half percent on the residential change and eleven-and-a-half percent on commercial. So this is the result. Again, we told you our objectives. We've shown you these charts once. You'll see the Capel bar lower, pretty uniformly on each of these, because every type of customer has some increase. You'll see it's a modest increase on that first top-left five-eighths inch meter with seven thousand gallons, again, representative of winter usage. The average usage is jumping up, four sixty-one. There, you'll see that in the middle chart. And then twenty thousand gallons is your peak average usage, which has not yet touched the twenty-five and up tier we just discussed. So notably, this twenty-five thousand-plus customer isn't plotted because you don't have many of them. They don't represent an average customer that we've demonstrated on the comparator list. So despite the larger increase on commercial, they haven't moved in relative position to the comparator group. But they have increased there on that two-inch meter at sixty-five thousand gallons, from four twenty-four to four seventy-nine. Also, your irrigation took a bump because that is at seventy-two thousand. Remember, we changed the twenty-five thousand and over, and so that does see a larger increase because that is represented here for those twenty-five and over volumes. Last thing I'll say, every council likes to look at this, so we have to show it. I think it's important, but we know that their system is not your system. Their needs are not your needs, and their customers don't use water like your customers. Oftentimes, you have really high water usage compared to the marketplace in the metroplex. Also, these are the rates that are available online today. I happen to be working with a few of these that are putting in some changes. They haven't finalized, so I can't share that result yet. But if you're going to put this into place in February, which I believe is the proposed timeline, some may have taken action by that time, others may change it again in October. So this is a moving target, but you have a lot of communities that are also participants in TRA. They're facing the same uphill battle you are. So, yes, sir.
So you didn't reflect the almost doubling of the twenty-five thousand-plus gallon residential usage in these numbers?
No, sir, you don't have a, I did not plot like a fifty thousand gallon residential usage.
So fifteen percent of the bills in the community would see a relatively sharp increase in the amount of revenue that they generate from the city?
Potentially. It's three to some odd dollars per, so we're talking seventy to a hundred-dollar bill differential. And so I won't say that's not steep, but if they're using that much water in the bills there today, I don't know what that is relative to their, I don't know how they would reflect on that for sure. One other data point, I do have handy, only six percent of your bills actually exceed thirty-five thousand. So we've cut out, not to further marginalize, but you don't have that many bills going out over thirty-five thousand. So if ten times that differential of three to four dollars more is about a thirty to forty-dollar impact on those using the system most, who are also paying that to support the Dallas water additional capacity, which in twenty-four is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's in alignment with the direction that we are recommending so that those kind of requiring the increase are paying it. We could push this into the monthly bills of every resident. There's, there are a lot of arguments on any position. There's not a wrong way to do rates, so it's certainly within your purview to do so. We thought this was an equitable way to distribute cost to those that are creating the need for the cost.
I honestly don't remember us being at the low tier across the metroplex.
So if I can say something there, we haven't raised rates since twenty-eighteen, and I'm sure everybody else has been. And as Jerry pointed out, we didn't raise rates because we were implementing things, and we like to make sure that we're giving the customer experience and that they're taking in, that they're experiencing each change as we make it. So twenty-eighteen was the last time that we raised rates. We've made changes, but the changes weren't supposed to increase the bill.
Yeah, we were just following, yeah, we were just following Dallas Water Utility. So maybe I'm remembering the twenty-eighteen graphs, because I think we were in the, we were in the median.
We were higher, yes.
Biju?
Yeah, so I have a moment.
No, I was just going for clarification, because of the way the mayor said that. Two thousand and eighteen was the last time that we raised rates. We haven't been passing along the DWU rate. So we have been, much like prior to two thousand and fifteen, we have been absorbing the rate increases from DW and TRA. So our customers have not been sharing in the cost from that perspective. We have been, we as a utility.
We've been absorbing.
We've been absorbing the cost.
So we had a consultant came in and talked about the storm work for the commercial side, and we increased some of that rate recently, right?
We've adopted a plan that over the next three or four more years, we still have more rates to increase.
When was that?
Actually, this October was, is the last year that we increased, so the rep today is the last increase, so it would have been four years ago.
That was before COVID, right?
Yep.
Is it before COVID and after COVID?
But all this presents that we don't trapse over that two million dollar barrier that would automatically jack our costs for DWU, correct?
You said two million, I just want to make sure. We had eighteen and a half million gallons was our, one of our thresholds.
Okay.
And the last few summers, we have been exceeding certain percentages that opt to start kicking things in. We've been working with DWU to not have them kick in. And we bumped on our daily take to the max on multiple times that shouldn't have kicked in, but we managed the system so that it didn't happen.
But none of these rate increases that we're considering would take into effect that automatic?
The rate, the rate increase anticipates the next summer, that we don't necessarily have to kick into phase three, right, as far as our, because, the reason why we were hitting those particulars is because we were trying to keep it below the eighteen and a half million gallons, so that we didn't take the automatic next five years, it's going to cost us this much money.
Right. But, but if we were to approve this increase in rates, that doesn't eliminate that risk that we would bear?
No, what we're anticipating is next summer, when our residents, and I say this respectfully, don't adhere to the conservation standards and we bump up to nineteen million gallons, then we're not all stressing over the impact because we know that we're going to be taking the next five hundred thousand or the next million. And it starts showing up in our, the rates are there to support that.
This rate plan will bump us up to nineteen and a half million instead of the eighteen and a half that we're currently at.
Gotcha, thank you, thank you.
I missed, I'm sorry if I didn't hear what the mayor said.
But I thought part of going to the different levels of comfort, conservation was associated with the tanks being able to refill, and upping that number is not going to have any impact, right?
That's a different issue from a, from that standpoint. We can, I'll let Mike get through it, because it's a system issue.
It is, it is. It's based on the tank being able to refill versus the amount of demand that is being utilized. So once we reach, once we reach that threshold, we are unable to refill, which means we need to take more water in order to catch back up to fill the tanks to supply for the next day. And so going to the conservation allows us to not utilize the water so that we are able to recapture and be able, and the demand is adequate enough to be able to use.
We could take, we could take the water, so this, I'm going to put it in my terms.
Yes.
I was slowing down the amount of water coming into my tank because I didn't want to go above eighteen point five. I could have told Mike, bust the eighteen point five, let's take the water we need to fill the tanks, and we're good to go.
Okay. So when the pump capacity issue?
No, no.
Okay, it was.
We, we, our staff are stressing because we are trying to pump up against that idea.
We have, it's going to weave, but we have about twenty-eight million gallons of pumping capacity, and we're only getting eighteen and a half.
Wouldn't we still try to stress conservation? We can, but our, that's why I said respectfully, our residents push us to the eighteen. It's a contract management issue.
Anecdotally, ten years ago, we didn't, we rarely had this conversation. And our population has grown, and we haven't increased that eighteen and a half. So we're basically, as a city, we are using more water, and we've never bumped that number up, or at least not recently. I think I asked him at one point.
Twenty-fifteen, August twenty-fifteen.
Twenty-fifteen, okay. But, you know, it's been nine years, and we've grown.
So is that eighteen and a half a monthly cap, an annual cap?
Annual. Daily, I'm sorry. But it's, but it's allocated on a yearly basis.
Right, right. But you're saying that this budget would give us, with these increases, we'd be presuming a nineteen and a half cap?
That's correct. Keep in mind that that's summer peak time, and what is our winter time average, six or seven million a day? So, you know, we're watering twelve million gallons a day to keep our grass green.
Yeah. Well, and how does this relate to the ongoing study of converting the rest of our medians to the zero escape to more, to better what we have?
Let me look at it, I mean, the dividing line, while it improves the situation, it's really, it's really our parks that are the biggest user. And so when we start rotating and cutting back on our parks, that's when you start getting complaints about the cracks in the parks, and the soccer kids can't go play, the baseball kids can't go play, and, you know, those kinds of things. And that, I think that goes to Mr. Carroll's question when he asked, you know, like, so how long does it take us to recover? Plus, I didn't even take into account if there's any tournaments that it would point on, so there's an economic side to the equation. And I want to reiterate, the way that the rate structure is set up is while there are increases in the O and M costs, and they're related to the DWU and TRA, we're talking about this additional cost being put on the big users, which by the way is one. But being put on the big user, so it's not being put into the base. Right? So this question that comes up, well, all our rates are going up because you're going ahead and taking this million or million and a half, that is not an accurate statement. If you use it, you will pay for it. If you want to conserve, great. Then after this year, we can evaluate, okay, did our residents do that? Did they conserve? And we'll know on a daily basis during the middle of July and August whether or not they are.
I'm going to ask you a question, it's going to be kind of pointed, so.
Sure.
Put your cap, she's dancing shoes on.
Yes, sir.
You deal with a lot of cities around us. How are we so much lower in terms of our rates than our sister cities?
Well, you have a healthy commercial base, and you have a lot of mitigating budget controls. If you haven't raised your rates, and again, not to echo staff too much here, but if you haven't raised your rates despite wholesale increases for years, you've been fiscally responsible. And I'm not going to say to the bone, but there may be reductions in your capital replenishment. There are some changes in your twenty-three to twenty-four budget as adopted, that the O and M side is already relieving some of the cost increase of twenty-four. So I would say those are the primary drivers. The other upside is you have high water users. So if you run a business, you know you're big users. And if you're big users, and again, we're sending price signals, but I've operated in and worked with other communities like yours, Parker, Prosper, a couple other large communities, Westlake, people are using the water because maybe they have plenty of discretionary income. But if you are showing your average representative customer, and there's a lot of units purchased, then your base customer type can be relatively low because someone else is supporting them at the top end. So I would say that may be as important as your commercial base.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jim, and Don?
Okay. So this new rate would take into effect or would account for part of our capital expenditures, right?
Yes.
So what's the dividing line where we use the rate money out of the enterprise fund to fund the capital expenditures, like a new water tower or something, and where we would use a bond?
We'll be talking about that in January. In terms of, it's a strategy question.
Right, right.
And, you know, he mentioned that they're using some cash to offset any particular rate increase. You know, we're, our service is healthy, and so we have, we have the flexibility to do that. At the end of the day, as an infrastructure investment, indebtedness supports infrastructure investment because, you know, future users are right and everything. But it's really becomes the all strategic choice, how do you want to do that?
Have we had any kind of significant infrastructure expenditure?
Again, I want to go back to Mike, and as far as capital expenditure?
Yeah, yeah. We have, we have projects that we're working on that are, we have a ten-year plan. Obviously, we're just working on a five-year plan right now, and it's related to aging infrastructure.
Like that LIT station behind?
The LIT station is an example. The other LIT station is on there. We have some water lines that are undersized and material type is corroded. So we have, they have a list of projects, capital projects that we need to get completed.
We've been paying for all that out of the enterprise fund thus far?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Thank you, sir.
On rate methodology, and this is, I don't know if I follow rate methodology, but we pay for eighteen and a half million dollars, I mean, eighteen and a half million gallons per day, period, right? Regardless if we use it or not. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
All right, that's in your, go ahead.
No, simply, it's a demand charge. So that three hundred and thirty per MGD is a demand component of the rate. They have a volumetric component of the rate as well. It's pretty consistent with many of the wholesale providers. So, because they have to be ready to serve eighteen point five at any given point, that's your max take per day. And so that's your, again, back to business, if you had a factor in any given point, they could, they could need X volumes on even just one day. You want them to pay for that otherwise untapped potential. On even just one day, you want them to pay for that otherwise untapped potential all year long. So their demand component, and then you have a volumetric component for the actual water used. So you're paying for peak when you need your.
The way I say it.
So we don't pay for eighteen and a half million gallons?
The mall builds a parking lot for Christmas holidays.
You what?
The mall builds a parking lot for Christmas holidays. During the rest of the year, it's, you know, very infrequently used. You pay for the entire parking lot.
Right, okay. So we, we pay for eighteen and a half million gallons?
You pay for the right. You pay for the right.
That's the demand.
Okay, yeah. Maybe, maybe to, because I don't know the number, is it okay, do you know the average daily, plus or minus?
Um, yeah, average, average is about, what, six, seven?
So if your average usage on any given day at a three sixty-five is six or seven, and you're paying for the potential capacity of eighteen point five, you've got eleven and a half of not waste, but needed, but only for five months of the year, maybe even just for two months of the year. So you're not paying for eighteen point five MGD times that many units. You're paying for the ability to take that much on demand basis, similar to.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So where I was going with this is we're going up to nineteen and a half. Let's say the conservation.
Hold on just a minute. Let me just be real clear.
The right to?
We have, this summer, if we go up and bump nineteen and a half, that's when we go. We're not going to DWU tomorrow and saying we're contracting for nineteen and a half.
Okay, so that answers, because that, that was where I was going. If we were going to pay for nineteen and a half, but conservation actually, like this doubling of the big rate actually worked and we didn't actually take that. Then we're paying, we don't want to.
We're only paying eighteen and a half.
Oh, we still, did the number still work? Because that was my concern, is do the number still work if we're going to pay for the extra? But you're saying we're not going to, we're just going to.
Well, when, when the summer comes and let's predict that it's going to be a drought and let's predict that our residents are pushing us at eighteen and a half, we will still push conservation, but once we get above the eighteen and a half, we stop stressing. We're ready to take the next five hundred thousand gallons.
Because we now have a rate structure that should support nineteen and a half.
Right, and it's based on the heavy users.
Right.
So it's not based on our typical resident or commercial.
But let's say the heavy users don't like that rate and they keep.
And they cut back.
And will actually just actually come.
It's kind of like what we have right now. We'll have a demand charge, that's that three hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And then there's a volume measure.
So we'll actually benefit because we won't pay, be paying for that extra.
So your conservation plan just worked.
Right, if that was to happen. Okay. I was more concerned about the inverse. Like the conservation worked, but we're paying for the extra.
And it may help that we bifurcated the rates. We purposely set rates, all else equal, that worked under the normal need, the normal eighteen point five. That's why we have the rate increases. Staff, maybe in preparation for this sort of thinking, said, let's do this only on the top tiers and only if we need it. And so that, that nineteen and a half or that one MG is isolated. And so the balance of your rates are set for the other needs. So I think you're insulated. Now, human behavior is hard to predict, so I can't say with certainty they're going to use the same amount of volumes I've projected. But I do believe that that's, I, I think that was good planning on the staff's part and we did look at it in a vacuum, right? So apart from the other rate needs, so we set the rates as needed, then we added on what we needed for this other component part.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. And I'm probably getting ahead of you, but do you have a summary of everything that's changing? Is there, I didn't know if there was a, there's been a bunch of changes, so just keeping up of what actually is actually changing.
Yes, sir. So, so in a nutshell, this is the summary of the rate design objectives. The rates as we've proposed accomplish these, these are the ends, right? The means we've taken are we've increased commercial at a higher rate than we have on the residential side. We also balanced the rest of our DWU need, as we've just discussed a little bit here, from those high users. As demonstrated on your current rate structure, one change, and I'm sorry they weren't isolated or highlighted. The residential irrigation class has shifted from a equal to commercial irrigation rates to now equal to, and this is seventy-five residents that have a separate dedicated irrigation meter, plus their domestic water meter for the home. So that's going to shift over. The residential rate for water is about two and a half percent more. The fourth tier, that twenty-five thousand and up, is no longer one point two five of the preceding tier three, but rather two times proceeding tier three. So too in commercial irrigation. So where that rate is now set equal to the twenty-five plus from the residential class. So those are the, the anchors, as it were, on the wastewater side. Again, we had an eight and a half percent increase on residential. We have eleven and a half percent on commercial. And those outcomes then related to our objectives for, oops, pardon me, managing, sorry, the comparables, managing where your organization sits for residential and commercial as comparisons go are demonstrated here. And I believe when you have another follow-up, there may be some next steps of formal ordinance outlining each of the changes to the rates as well.
I hate to do this. Could you go back to the bar chart that you had toward the beginning?
Yes, sir. With the proposed rates or the.
That one?
Cost? Yes, sir.
The dash line is projected revenue as we currently stand or with these changes?
That's at, at current rates, sir. Yeah, this is a, to show the, the gap.
And then the solid one is with the changes?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Ishu?
Yeah, Mike, I just want to go back. You said the, the, the rate hike is going to be, going into effect this year?
For storm, the stormwater. It's, it's different from.
Right.
The water sewer.
Okay, so that, I just.
Yeah, so the, the last rate hike for stormwater was effective October one, I believe, at which is five dollars per resident household.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next steps would be in December, in the December council meeting. We'll bring forward an amended ordinance that will showcase the rates. And then if approved, we will start communication to citizens, letting them know about the rate changes via newsletters, social media, websites. We'll work with Hannah's team to make sure that we cover the full scope of communications. And then from there, the new rates will be rolled out in the February billing cycle. There any questions on this? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I should have asked, any questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right, the time is seven oh eight PM. We're at the end of work session. We'll move into the city council chamber for the regular session at seven thirty. Let them around here. I've said this to the judge before, but this is one group I've, I'm really glad I've never seen professionally except in here. So thank you very much for being with us. Whereas municipal courts play an essential role in preserving public safety, deterring future criminal behavior and protecting the quality of life for area residents and all citizens of the state of Texas. And whereas more citizens will have an encounter with municipal courts than all other types of Texas courts combined. And the administration of justice in our municipal courts is a substantial influence in shaping the public's impression of the Texas judicial system. And whereas Texas Senate Bill Number nineteen twenty-four, which established the City of Capella Municipal Court as a court of record in nineteen ninety-seven and established it as Capella Municipal Court Number One and which authorized a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office. The Capella Municipal Court Number One is a Texas state court and its judges are members of the state of Texas judiciary. Whereas our municipal judges, who pledge to be impartial and who also serve as magistrates for the state of Texas, work diligently to ensure the fair administration of justice and then to enforce procedural safeguards for all defendants, including indigent defendants. And whereas the City of Capella is committed to the principles that an independent, fair and competent judiciary will properly interpret and apply the law and that its judges and court personnel should adhere to the law and conduct themselves in a way which promotes public confidence in the, in the judiciary. And whereas the City of Capella recognizes that the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Texas and the laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Capella Municipal Court Number One in complying with all such legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capella, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of November sixth through ten, twenty twenty-three, as municipal court week. We commend all those associated with the Capella Municipal Court Number One for their exemplary dedication to the City of Capella. In witness, therefore, I set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Capella to be affixed as fourteenth day of November twenty twenty-three. So before I turn the microphone over to, to Judge White, I think Councilmember Walker had something to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just, as a member of the bar for thirty-eight years, I know that the administration of justice at any level is difficult and you all make a very hard job look easy. And I want to thank you for that on behalf of everyone in this town. You just do a fantastic job. And for the judges, you know, your wisdom and your objectivity and the way that you apply the law fairly every time someone comes before you contributes to our quality of life. The predictability and of your rulings and your application of law, or laws and ordinances, it makes a difference. And I just want to thank all of you on behalf of everyone, all the citizens of this town and the other members of the council. Thank you so much.
Judge White, did you have something you'd like to say?
Just briefly, Mayor. First of all, let me just say to the mayor, to the council members, city manager, we at the municipal court are grateful for all of the support that all of the departments in this city give to the municipal court. We're not just an island out there alone. Sometimes we might feel that way because of the nature of our business, but we do appreciate all of the support. And one thing I would say, and I'm going to say it on behalf of all of the judges, and we're missing one of our judges tonight, Judge Lafferty, but we never say quite enough thanks to the court staff. And I just want to say on behalf of the entire judiciary of the new municipal court that we appreciate everything that you all do for us. It makes us shine and you keep us on our toes. So thank you very much. And if I might, let everyone introduce themselves.
Judge Stephen File.
Judge Peter Graham.
Deputy Court Clerk Elizabeth Adams.
Deputy Court Clerk Gretchen Smith.
Deputy Court Administrator Amy Bockus.
Court Administrator Elizabeth Laboree.
Senior Marshal Bruce Keiner.
Marshal Peter Dirks.
Marshal John McCordle.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is our citizens' appearance. I do not believe we had anybody signed up to speak, so we'll skip over number seven and go on to item number eight. Item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and is generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the monitors. Counsel, is there any questions or desire to pull a consent agenda item? I would be more than willing to accept a motion at this time. Councilmember Nevels?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items, A through G.
Seconded by Councilmember Carroll. All in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosa Smith, Carroll, Nevels, Matthew Hill, in favor? None opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And there has been a request by the applicant to defer this to the December twelfth meeting. So I will ask for a motion to do so. Councilmember Nevels?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I move to postpone agenda item nine until our next council meeting on twelve, twelve, twenty twenty-three. Oh, and leave the public hearing open.
Thank you. Second from Councilmember Hill. All in, all in favor?
Walker, Hina, Hosa Smith, Carroll, Nevels, Matthew Hill, in favor? None opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number ten is another public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and we'll ask Ms. Boswell to read that into the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number ten is a public hearing to consider approval of a zoning change request from PD two thirteen R six dash H to PD two thirteen R seven dash H to revise the detailed site plan for the five two-story live-work buildings by enclosing the outdoor alcove area, allowing up to eight hundred square feet of retail use for each building and allowing the west porches for buildings A, C, and E to have a covered gabled roof on seven point, on point seven one acres of property located at the northeast corner of South Capella Road and Heath Lane. So in twenty twenty-one, council did approve a development to construct five speculative live-work units and one common area parking lot at this location. There's currently one unit under construction. The applicant is requesting to make a couple of changes to the exterior of the building. So currently, there's an alcove area shown on the elevations. It's about seventy square feet. And they're asking to enclo, to be able to enclose that area, so it just gives them a more square interior. And secondly, to the ability to extend the roof line on buildings A, C, and E over the second floor balcony. So the interior floor plans will be finalized with the retention of fires. The enclosure of the alcove areas will be offset by extending the garage area so that the air conditioning space will remain the same. Uh, the other request is to allow for the option of up to eight hundred square feet of retail service area uses on the first floor per each building. Where currently the PD allows for professional office uses and one medical office use up to twelve hundred square feet. Uh, with this change, it will not change the amount of parking. So currently, um, with the twelve hundred square feet of office, measured at, calculated at one per three hundred, that's four spaces. If we go to, um, up to eight hundred square feet of retail, at one per two hundred, it will still be four parking spaces. So the difference in that area, it'll be more live area versus work. And so just on this illustration here, the yellow at the top left represents the alcove area. And on the, so there's a, right now, there's a window and a door, uh, which you see in the green.
Thank you.[438.12][438.12][S01. Thank you.[439.12][439.12][S01. Thank you.[440.12][440.12][S01. Thank you.[441.12][441.12][S01. Thank you.[442.12][442.12][S01. Thank you.[443.12][443.12][S01. Thank you.[444.12][444.12][S01. Thank you.[445.12][445.12][S01. Thank you.[446.12][446.12][S01. Thank you.[447.12][447.12][S01. Thank you.[448.12][448.12][S01. Thank you.[449.12][449.12][S01. Thank you.[450.12][450.12][S01. Thank you.[451.12][451.12][S01. Thank you.[452.12][452.12][S01. Thank you.[453.12][453.12][S01. Thank you.[454.12][454.12][S01. Thank you.[455.12][455.12][S01. Thank you.[456.12][456.12][S01. Thank you.[457.12][457.12][S01. Thank you.[458.12][458.12][S01. Thank you.[459.12][459.12][S01. Thank you.[460.12][460.12][S01. Thank you.[461.12][461.12][S01. Thank you.[462.12][462.12][S01. Thank you.[463.12][463.12][S01. Thank you.[464.12][464.12][S01. Thank you.[465.12][465.12][S01. Thank you.[466.12][466.12][S01. Thank you.[467.12][467.12][S01. Thank you.[468.12][468.12][S01. Thank you.[469.12][469.12][S01. Thank you.[470.12][470.12][S01. Thank you.[471.12][471.12][S01. Thank you.[472.12][472.12][S01. Thank you.[473.12][473.12][S01. Thank you.[474.12][474.12][S01. Thank you.[475.12][475.12][S01. Thank you.[476.12][476.12][S01. Thank you.[477.12][477.12][S01. Thank you.[478.12][478.12][S01. Thank you.[479.12][479.12][S01. Thank you.[480.12][480.12][S01. Thank you.[481.12][481.12][S01. Thank you.[482.12][482.12][S01. Thank you.[483.12][483.12][S01. Thank you.[484.12][484.12][S01. Thank you.[485.12][485.12][S01. Thank you.[486.12][486.12][S01. Thank you.[487.12][487.12][S01. Thank you.[488.12][488.12][S01. Thank you.[489.12][489.12][S01. Thank you.[490.12][490.12][S01. Thank you.[491.12][491.12][S01. Thank you.[492.12][492.12][S01. Thank you.[493.12][493.12][S01. Thank you.[494.12][494.12][S01. Thank you.[495.12][495.12][S01. Thank you.[496.12][496.12][S01. Thank you.[497.12][497.12][S01. Thank you.[498.12][498.12][S01. Thank you.[499.12][499.12][S01. Thank you.[500.12][500.12][S01. Thank you.[501.12][501.12][S01. Thank you.[502.12][502.12][S01. Thank you.[503.12][503.12][S01. Thank you.[504.12][504.12][S01. Thank you.[505.12][505.12][S01. Thank you.[506.12][506.12][S01. Thank you.[507.12][507.12][S01. Thank you.[508.12][508.12][S01. Thank you.[509.12][509.12][S01. Thank you.[510.12][510.12][S01. Thank you.[511.12][511.12][S01. Thank you.[512.12][512.12][S01. Thank you.[513.12][513.12][S01. Thank you.[514.12][514.12][S01. Thank you.[515.12][515.12][S01. Thank you.[516.12][516.12][S01. Thank you.[517.12][517.12][S01. Thank you.[518.12][518.12][S01. Thank you.[519.12][519.12][S01. Thank you.[520.12][520.12][S01. Thank you.[521.12][521.12][S01. Thank you.[522.12][522.12][S01. Thank you.[523.12][523.12][S01. Thank you.[524.12][524.12][S01. Thank you.[525.12][525.12][S01. Thank you.[526.12][526.12][S01. Thank you.[527.12][527.12][S01. Thank you.[528.12][528.12][S01. Thank you.[529.12][529.12][S01. Thank you.[530.12][530.12][S01. Thank you.[531.12][531.12][S01. Thank you.[532.12][532.12][S01. Thank you.[533.12][533.12][S01. Thank you.[534.12][534.12][S01. Thank you.[535.12][535.12][S01. Thank you.[536.12][536.12][S01. Thank you.[537.12][537.12][S01. Thank you.[538.12][538.12][S01. Thank you.[539.12][539.12][S01. Thank you.[540.12][540.12][S01. Thank you.[541.12][541.12][S01. Thank you.[542.12][542.12][S01. Thank you.[543.12][543.12][S01. Thank you.[544.12][544.12][S01. Thank you.[545.12][545.12][S01. Thank you.[546.12][546.12][S01. Thank you.[547.12][547.12][S01. Thank you.[548.12][548.12][S01. Thank you.[549.12][549.12][S01. Thank you.[550.12][550.12][S01. Thank you.[551.12][551.12][S01. Thank you.[552.12][552.12][S01. Thank you.[553.12][553.12][S01. Thank you.[554.12][554.12][S01. Thank you.[555.12][555.12][S01. Thank you.[556.12][556.12][S01. Thank you.[557.12][557.12][S01. Thank you.[558.12][558.12][S01. Thank you.[559.12][559.12][S01. Thank you.[560.12][560.12][S01. Thank you.[561.12][561.12][S01. Thank you.[562.12][562.12][S01. Thank you.[563.12][563.12][S01. Thank you.[564.12][564.12][S01. Thank you.[565.12][565.12][S01. Thank you.[566.12][566.12][S01. Thank you.[567.12][567.12][S01. Thank you.[568.12][568.12][S01. Thank you.[569.12][569.12][S01. Thank you.[570.12][570.12][S01. Thank you.[571.12][571.12][S01. Thank you.[572.12][572.12][S01. Thank you.[573.12][573.12][S01. Thank you.[574.12][574.12][S01. Thank you.[575.12][575.12][S01. Thank you.[576.12][576.12][S01. Thank you.[577.12][577.12][S01. Thank you.[578.12][578.12][S01. Thank you.[579.12][579.12][S01. Thank you.[580.12][580.12][S01. Thank you.[581.12][581.12][S01. Thank you.[582.12][582.12][S01. Thank you.[583.12][583.12][S01. Thank you.[584.12][584.12][S01. Thank you.[585.12][585.12][S01. Thank you.[586.12][586.12][S01. Thank you.[587.12][587.12][S01. Thank you.[588.12][588.12][S01. Thank you.[589.12][589.12][S01. Thank you.[590.12][590.12][S01. Thank you.[591.12][591.12][S01. Thank you.[592.12][592.12][S01. Thank you.[593.12][593.12][S01. Thank you.[594.12][594.12][S01. Thank you.[595.12][595.12][S01. Thank you.[596.12][596.12][S01. Thank you.[597.12][597.12][S01. Thank you.[598.12][598.12][S01. Thank you.[599.12][599.12][S01. Thank you.[600.12][600.12][S01. Thank you.[601.12][601.12][S01. Thank you.[602.12][602.12][S01. Thank you.[603.12][603.12][S01. Thank you.[604.12][604.12][S01. Thank you.[605.12][605.12][S01. Thank you.[606.12][606.12][S01. Thank you.[607.12][607.12][S01. Thank you.[608.12][608.12][S01. Thank you.[609.12][609.12][S01. Thank you.[610.12][610.12][S01. Thank you.[611.12][611.12][S01. Thank you.[612.12][612.12][S01. Thank you.[613.12][613.12][S01. Thank you.[614.12][614.12][S01. Thank you.[615.12][615.12][S01. Thank you.[616.12][616.12][S01. Thank you.[617.12][617.12][S01. Thank you.[618.12][618.12][S01. Thank you.[619.12][619.12][S01. Thank you.[620.12][620.12][S01. Thank you.[621.12][621.12][S01. Thank you.[622.12][622.12][S01. Thank you.[623.12][623.12][S01. Thank you.[624.12][624.12][S01. Thank you.[625.12][625.12][S01. Thank you.[626.12][626.12][S01. Thank you.[627.12][627.12][S01. Thank you.[628.12][628.12][S01. Thank you.[629.12][629.12][S01. Thank you.[630.12][630.12][S01. Thank you.[631.12][631.12][S01. Thank you.[632.12][632.12][S01. Thank you.[633.12][633.12][S01. Thank you.[634.12][634.12][S01. Thank you.[635.12][635.12][S01. Thank you.[636.12][636.12][S01. Thank you.[637.12][637.12][S01. Thank you.[638.12][638.12][S01. Thank you.[639.12][639.12][S01. Thank you.[640.12][640.12][S01. Thank you.[641.12][641.12][S01. Thank you.[642.12][642.12][S01. Thank you.[643.12][643.12][S01. Thank you.[644.12][644.12][S01. Thank you.[645.12][645.12][S01. Thank you.[646.12][646.12][S01. Thank you.[647.12][647.12][S01. Thank you.[648.12][648.12][S01. Thank you.[649.12][649.12][S01. Thank you.[650.12][650.12][S01. Thank you.[651.12][651.12][S01. Thank you.[652.12][652.12][S01. Thank you.[653.12][653.12][S01. Thank you.[654.12][654.12][S01. Thank you.[655.12][655.12][S01. Thank you.[656.12][656.12][S01. Thank you.[657.12][657.12][S01. Thank you.[658.12][658.12][S01. Thank you.[659.12][659.12][S01. Thank you.[660.12][660.12][S01. Thank you.[661.12][661.12][S01. Thank you.[662.12][662.12][S01. Thank you.[663.12][663.12][S01. Thank you.[664.12][664.12][S01. Thank you.[665.12][665.12][S01. Thank you.[666.12][666.12][S01. Thank you.[667.12][667.12][S01. Thank you.[668.12][668.12][S01. Thank you.[669.12][669.12][S01. Thank you.[670.12][670.12][S01. Thank you.[671.12][671.12][S01. Thank you.[672.12][672.12][S01. Thank you.[673.12][673.12][S01. Thank you.[674.12][674.12][S01. Thank you.[675.12][675.12][S01. Thank you.[676.12][676.12][S01. Thank you.[677.12][677.12][S01. Thank you.[678.12][678.12][S01. Thank you.[679.12][679.12][S01. Thank you.[680.12][680.12][S01. Thank you.[681.12][681.12][S01. Thank you.[682.12][682.12][S01. Thank you.[683.12][683.12][S01. Thank you.[684.12][684.12][S01. Thank you.[685.12][685.12][S01. Thank you.[686.12][686.12][S01. Thank you.[687.12][687.12][S01. Thank you.[688.12][688.12][S01. Thank you.[689.12][689.12][S01. Thank you.[690.12][690.12][S01. Thank you.[691.12][691.12][S01. Thank you.[692.12][692.12][S01. Thank you.[693.12][693.12][S01. Thank you.[694.12][694.12][S01. Thank you.[695.12][695.12][S01. Thank you.[696.12][696.12][S01. Thank you.[697.12][697.12][S01. Thank you.[698.12][698.12][S01. Thank you.[699.12][699.12][S01. Thank you.[700.12][700.12][S01. Thank you.[701.12][701.12][S01. Thank you.[702.12][702.12][S01. Thank you.[703.12][703.12][S01. Thank you.[704.12][704.12][S01. Thank you.[705.12][705.12][S01. Thank you.[706.12][706.12][S01. Thank you.[707.12][707.12][S01. Thank you.[708.12][708.12][S01. Thank you.[709.12][709.12][S01. Thank you.[710.12][710.12][S01. Thank you.[711.12][711.12][S01. Thank you.[712.12][712.12][S01. Thank you.[713.12][713.12][S01. Thank you.[714.12][714.12][S01. Thank you.[715.12][715.12][S01. Thank you.[716.12][716.12][S01. Thank you.[717.12][717.12][S01. Thank you.[718.12][718.12][S01. Thank you.[719.12][719.12][S01. Thank you.[720.12][720.12][S01. Thank you.[721.12][721.12][S01. Thank you.[722.12][722.12][S01. Thank you.[723.12][723.12][S01. Thank you.[724.12][724.12][S01. Thank you.[725.12][725.12][S01. Thank you.[726.12][726.12][S01. Thank you.[727.12][727.12][S01. Thank you.[728.12][728.12][S01. Thank you.[729.12][729.12][S01. Thank you.[730.12][730.12][S01. Thank you.[731.12][731.12][S01. Thank you.[732.12][732.12][S01. Thank you.[733.12][733.12][S01. Thank you.[734.12][734.12][S01. Thank you.[735.12][735.12][S01. Thank you.[736.12][736.12][S01. Thank you.[737.12][737.12][S01. Thank you.[738.12][738.12][S01. Thank you.[739.12][739.12][S01. Thank you.[740.12][740.12][S01. Thank you.[741.12][741.12][S01. Thank you.[742.12][742.12][S01. Thank you.[743.12][743.12][S01. Thank you.[744.12][744.12][S01. Thank you.[745.12][745.12][S01. Thank you.[746.12][746.12][S01. Thank you.[747.12][747.12][S01. Thank you.[748.12][748.12][S01. Thank you.[749.12][749.12][S01. Thank you.[750.12][750.12][S01. Thank you.[751.12][751.12][S01. Thank you.[752.12][752.12][S01. Thank you.[753.12][753.12][S01. Thank you.[754.12][754.12][S01. Thank you.[755.12][755.12][S01. Thank you.[756.12][756.12][S01. Thank you.[757.12][757.12][S01. Thank you.[758.12][758.12][S01. Thank you.[759.12][759.12][S01. Thank you.[760.12][760.12][S01. Thank you.[761.12][761.12][S01. Thank you.[762.12][762.12][S01. Thank you.[763.12][763.12][S01. Thank you.[764.12][764.12][S01. Thank you.[765.12][765.12][S01. Thank you.[766.12][766.12][S01. Thank you.[767.12][767.12][S01. Thank you.[768.12][768.12][S01. Thank you.[769.12][769.12][S01. Thank you.[770.12][770.12][S01. Thank you.[771.12][771.12][S01. Thank you.[772.12][772.12][S01. Thank you.[773.12][773.12][S01. Thank you.[774.12][774.12][S01. Thank you.[775.12][775.12][S01. Thank you.[776.12][776.12][S01. Thank you.[777.12][777.12][S01. Thank you.[778.12][778.12][S01. Thank you.[779.12][779.12][S01. Thank you.[780.12][780.12][S01. Thank you.[781.12][781.12][S01. Thank you.[782.12][782.12][S01. Thank you.[783.12][783.12][S01. Thank you.[784.12][784.12][S01. Thank you.[785.12][785.12][S01. Thank you.[786.12][786.12][S01. Thank you.[787.12][787.12][S01. Thank you.[788.12][788.12][S01. Thank you.[789.12][789.12][S01. Thank you.[790.12][790.12][S01. Thank you.[791.12][791.12][S01. Thank you.[792.12][792.12][S01. Thank you.[793.12][793.12][S01. Thank you.[794.12][794.12][S01. Thank you.[795.12][795.12][S01. Thank you.[796.12][796.12][S01. Thank you.[797.12][797.12][S01. Thank you.[798.12][798.12][S01. Thank you.[799.12][799.12][S01. Thank you.[800.12][800.12][S01. Thank you.[801.12][801.12][S01. Thank you.[802.12][802.12][S01. Thank you.[803.12][803.12][S01. Thank you.[804.12][804.12][S01. Thank you.[805.12][805.12][S01. Thank you.[806.12][806.12][S01. Thank you.[807.12][807.12][S01. Thank you.[808.12][808.12][S01. Thank you.[809.12][809.12][S01. Thank you.[810.12][810.12][S01. Thank you.[811.12][811.12][S01. Thank you.[812.12][812.12][S01. Thank you.[813.12][813.12][S01. Thank you.[814.12][814.12][S01. Thank you.[815.12][815.12][S01. Thank you.[816.12][816.12][S01. Thank you.[817.12][817.12][S01. Thank you.[818.12][818.12][S01. Thank you.[819.12][819.12][S01. Thank you.[820.12][820.12][S01. Thank you.[821.12][821.12][S01. Thank you.[822.12][822.12][S01. Thank you.[823.12][823.12][S01. Thank you.[824.12][824.12][S01. Thank you.[825.12][825.12][S01. Thank you.[826.12][826.12][S01. Thank you.[827.12][827.12][S01. Thank you.[828.12][828.12][S01. Thank you.[829.12][829.12][S01. Thank you.[830.12][830.12][S01. Thank you.[831.12][831.12][S01. Thank you.[832.12][832.12][S01. Thank you.[833.12][833.12][S01. Thank you.[834.12][834.12][S01. Thank you.[835.12][835.12][S01. Thank you.[836.12][836.12][S01. Thank you.[837.12][837.12][S01. Thank you.[838.12][838.12][S01. Thank you.[839.12][839.12][S01. Thank you.[840.12][840.12][S01. Thank you.[841.12][841.12][S01. Thank you.[842.12][842.12][S01. Thank you.[843.12][843.12][S01. Thank you.[844.12][844.12][S01. Thank you.[845.12][845.12][S01. Thank you.[846.12][846.12][S01. Thank you.[847.12][847.12][S01. Thank you.[848.12][848.12][S01. Thank you.[849.12][849.12][S01. Thank you.[850.12][850.12][S01. Thank you.[851.12][851.12][S01. Thank you.[852.12][852.12][S01. Thank you.[853.12][853.12][S01. Thank you.[854.12][854.12][S01. Thank you.[855.12][855.12][S01. Thank you.[856.12][856.12][S01. Thank you.[857.12][857.12][S01. Thank you.[858.12][858.12][S01. Thank you.[859.12][859.12][S01. Thank you.[860.12][860.12][S01. Thank you.[861.12][861.12][S01. Thank you.[862.12][862.12][S01. Thank you.[863.12][863.12][S01. Thank you.[864.12][864.12][S01. Thank you.[865.12][865.12][S01. Thank you.[866.12][866.12][S01. Thank you.[867.12][867.12][S01. Thank you.[868.12][868.12][S01. Thank you.[869.12][869.12][S01. Thank you.[870.12][870.12][S01. Thank you.[871.12][871.12][S01. Thank you.[872.12][872.12][S01. Thank you.[873.12][873.12][S01. Thank you.[874.12][874.12][S01. Thank you.[875.12][875.12][S01. Thank you.[876.12][876.12][S01. Thank you.[877.12][877.12][S01. Thank you.[878.12][878.12][S01. Thank you.[879.12][879.12][S01. Thank you.[880.12][880.12][S01. Thank you.[881.12][881.12][S01. Thank you.[882.12][882.12][S01. Thank you.[883.12][883.12][S01. Thank you.[884.12][884.12][S01. Thank you.[885.12][885.12][S01. Thank you.[886.12][886.12][S01. Thank you.[887.12][887.12][S01. Thank you.[888.12][888.12][S01. Thank you.[889.12][889.12][S01. Thank you.[890.12][890.12][S01. Thank you.[891.12][891.12][S01. Thank you.[892.12][892.12][S01. Thank you.[893.12][893.12][S01. Thank you.[894.12][894.12][S01. Thank you.[895.12][895.12][S01. Thank you.[896.12][896.12][S01. Thank you.[897.12][897.12][S01. Thank you.[898.12][898.12][S01. Thank you.[899.12][899.12][S01. Thank you.[900.12][900.12][S01. Thank you.[901.12][901.12][S01. Thank you.[902.12][902.12][S01. Thank you.[903.12][903.12][S01. Thank you.[904.12][904.12][S01. Thank you.[905.12][905.12][S01. Thank you.[906.12][906.12][S01. Thank you.[907.12][907.12][S01. Thank you.[908.12][908.12][S01. Thank you.[909.12][909.12][S01. Thank you.[910.12][910.12][S01. Thank you.[911.12][911.12][S01. Thank you.[912.12][912.12][S01. Thank you.[913.12][913.12][S01. Thank you.[914.12][914.12][S01. Thank you.[915.12][915.12][S01. Thank you.[916.12][916.12][S01. Thank you.[917.12][917.12][S01. Thank you.[918.12][918.12][S01. Thank you.[919.12][919.12][S01. Thank you.[920.12][920.12][S01. Thank you.[921.12][921.12][S01. Thank you.[922.12][922.12][S01. Thank you.[923.12][923.12][S01. Thank you.[924.12][924.12][S01. Thank you.[925.12][925.12][S01. Thank you.[926.12][926.12][S01. Thank you.[927.12][927.12][S01. Thank you.[928.12][928.12][S01. Thank you.[929.12][929.12][S01. Thank you.[930.12][930.12][S01. Thank you.[931.12][931.12][S01. Thank you.[932.12][932.12][S01. Thank you.[933.12][933.12][S01. Thank you.[934.12][934.12][S01. Thank you.[935.12][935.12][S01. Thank you.[936.12][936.12][S01. Thank you.[937.12][937.12][S01. Thank you.[938.12][938.12][S01. Thank you.[939.12][939.12][S01. Thank you.[940.12][940.12][S01. Thank you.[941.12][941.12][S01. Thank you.[942.12][942.12][S01. Thank you.[943.12][943.12][S01. Thank you.[944.12][944.12][S01. Thank you.[945.12][945.12][S01. Thank you.[946.12][946.12][S01. Thank you.
Materials. And we'll continue those discussions if, if approved. And if we land on something that requires changes to their landscape plan, we wanted them to have the ability to change it without having to spend the extra time bringing it back through the process through P N Z and city council. Therefore, we've added a condition to the recommendation to give staff the ability to sign off administratively on changes to the landscape plan. The conceptual office and office retail buildings generally contain the same materials as the office warehouse, except for having much less tilt wall. Here's a rendering that gives you the scale and general look of the project. The top is facing northwest and the bottom is facing southeast. Part two of the request is the detail plan development for the office warehouse building and the retention pond. The 257,600 square foot office warehouse is proposed to be located on the northern portion of the entire site and would be constructed in the first phase of development. It's proposed to be constructed on 14.7 acres along with a retention pond area. This is adjacent to a vacant tract of land to the north that's currently zoned for light industrial purposes. Dock doors will be located on the northern portion of the building and a screening wing wall will be constructed on the west end of the truck court area. This is a speculative building and could be used for one or multiple tenants. The south side of the building has car parking spaces adjacent to it and to the north will have the truck parking. The applicant is requesting an exception to the parking requirement for warehouse to be one parking space for each employee on the maximum working shift plus space to accommodate all other trucks and vehicles associated with the use, but not less than one parking space for each 2,000 square feet of floor area. The standard warehouse parking ratio listed in the zoning ordinance is one parking space per 1,000 square feet. So if this exception is granted at one per 2,000 square feet and given they've got 5% of the proposed building will be devoted to office use, which is calculated a parking ratio of one per 300, then 146 parking spaces would be required and this proposal is showing 175 parking spaces. If the tenants end up needing more parking, the truck parking can be reconfigured in a minor site plan amendment, which can be done administratively. No outside storage is proposed. Included in the detailed plan is a conceptual request for a multi-tenant monument sign. The sign will be further defined through the permitting process and shall be compliant with the signed section of the zoning ordinance. This is intended to be shared amongst the tenants for each of the lots and additional monument signs may be allowed on other lots. The building is approximately 50 feet in height and it will be made of concrete tilt wall with form liner and reveals. This will consist of three main colors, all neutral in design. Here's the enhanced entry of the warehouse. In terms of tree mitigation, the applicant is clear cutting the entire site. They were initially asking that some of the mitigation amount be reduced, but have since withdrawn that from their proposal. And a total of 7,523 caliper inches are being removed totaling $1,512,550 in mitigation fees, and that's after the landscape credit has been applied. The applicant includes a comprehensive list of PD conditions to address the development of the site. The allowable land uses are listed to include distribution center. At the request of the applicant, the exterior construction material was added, which will allow for tilt wall, and the proposed materials will remain consistent throughout the entire plan development. The multi-tenant monument signs shall be allowed to have all tenant names throughout the development regardless of which lot they're located. Parking is allowed at one per employee on the peak shift or one per 2,000 square feet, whichever is greater, as opposed to the one per 1,000 square foot ratio. A condition related to allowing greater than 50% of parking, of the required parking in the front yard will be needed for the two commercial tracks on 121. The applicant's requesting the screening of roof mounted equipment to only require, for it only to be required to be screened from the right-of-way and adjacent residential, not from the adjacent commercial sites. Perimeter trees for lot one have been relocated from the north and the east to provide trees where they would have more impact on the aesthetics of the site and won't impact the proposed retaining walls. They're proposing to have their, their site lit at all hours of the night, but at the, at the property line, it will be zero-foot candles. Then they came forward with a lengthy definition of distribution center, which we've reviewed with the city attorney and it's, matches up with all other office warehouse type uses within our industrial part of town. The third part of the request is also associated with the office warehouse component, which requires a change to the future land use map from freeway special district to industrial special district for lot one, and that does not include the retention pond. So this entire property was part of a city-initiated effort 20 years ago to establish highway commercial zoning along freeway frontages to enhance development standards, ensuring that limited, that limited freeway frontage and entry portals into the city of Capel are of high-quality developments that were envisioned. The 2030 master plan adopted in 2011 echoed that intent by designating this area as freeway special district. The request before you will leave 4.5 acres fronting on state highway 121. It'll leave that freeway special district and the 13.2 acres located to the north will be modified to industrial special district. The proposed request will provide a 2,500, or 257,600 square foot office ware, warehouse building adjacent to another property with industrial uses to the north. The access to and from the site is challenging because of a one-way frontage. The applicant's demonstrated that it's not feasible to construct a drive that connects state highway 121 to Vista Ridge Mall Drive to the north to improve that, that situation due to a significant grade change. And for these, for these reasons, and because the applicant has provided enhancements to the building in the form of building height, entry enhancements, glazing and articulations, staff is not opposed to the land use designation for this 13.2 acre portion be amended back to industrial special district. There were seven notices sent out within 200 feet as required by state law. 93 courtesy notices were sent out within 800 feet and none were returned in favor or opposition. The planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request, subject to numerous revisions that were needed to their plans, and those have since been addressed. The community development department recommends approval of the concept plan, the detail plan, and future land use plan amendment, subject to the following conditions. One, that the property be platted in accordance with subdivision ordinance regulations. Two, the conditions as outlined in the proposed PD conditions exhibit. Three, the retention pond and trail, as depicted on the detailed site plan, be constructed and maintained with the development of the office warehouse on lot one. Four, the fire lane mutual access drives and their associated perimeter landscaping be constructed on the west side of lot two and the east side of lot three concurrent with the construction of lot one, as depicted on the concept plan and the landscape plan. Five, additional comments may be generated upon detailed engineering review. And six, staff shall be given the authority to administratively approve the changes to the landscape plan. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience and has a brief presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Steer.
Thank you.
Any, Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Steer. Clarification on the parking. So we are given an exception for the parking, and I know they're going to have 175 spaces. They only need 146 per the new, the amended requirements.
Yes.
Do we know how many would have been required if, if it was, you know, standard?
Um, yeah, so, so that's one per 1,000, so.
So it would have, I mean, I don't know if it'd be double, I mean, if it's 146 was required, would it be?
Correct.
Close to double.
Yeah, close to double.
Close to double, somewhere around there. So is there any concerns, we're talking about, I don't know, 290, 300 would have been required normally, but we're only going to have 175. Is there?
Right, yeah.
Concern with their, that, that much reduced parking at this location?
There is really not, and we're looking to amend our zoning ordinance and, and examine our parking requirements. We found other surrounding cities to have a one per 2,000 ratio.
Okay, so that's not really all that out of the norm for the industry?
No, sir.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the solid presentation as usual, Matt. Okay, so why, did they articulate why there was the need for a special definition of the distribution center as distinct from the one that we already have?
So currently, we don't have a distribution center definition, so we do have a warehouse definition, so they were just trying to get it clarified on the books.
Okay, so I take it there's had greater detail?
Yes, sir.
So we would actually benefit from, from that with respect to the greater specificity, right?
Yes, sir.
And then on the parking exception, I know one reason that we're looking at reducing the parking requirements is because of the use of automation in a lot of these facilities, but we don't really know what this facility would be used for at this point, right?
Correct.
Okay. On the detail plan for lots two and three, there was parking shown around the proposed structures. I'll let you get back to that. Thank you, sir, for doing that. That, that's, that's good, either one of those is fine. So around lot two and lot three, there's parking drawn out. Is that, I mean, is that technically drawn in a way that represents the number of parking spaces we would require?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. They will have to refine it a little bit when they come through for detail plan approval.
But there's no exception granted there from the 1 to 2,000?
Well, so, so they have one, the lot two, I believe, is, is, is office and lot three is retail and office, and so they park those according to our one per 200 for retail and one per 300 for office.
So there's no exception being requested at that point?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Matt, appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Just for clarification purpose, today for the entrance and exit, they are using the road coming from Vista Ridge Mall, right?
Today, yes, they, they do have, I believe there's a drive down there from Vista Ridge Mall, yes, sir.
So once this project is completed, where is entrance and exit?
Okay, so the entrance will be from, from either business 121 or the frontage of, of state highway 121, and there will not be any access to Vista Ridge Mall Drive.
So they're not sure which, which area they're going to have the entrance and exit?
Well, so, so right here, let me show you here. Let me get my mouse working here. I guess the mouse doesn't work. Let's see if I can do this. Okay, so, so here's, here's the entrance to the, or the ingress egress to business 121. Here's one to the frontage road of, of state highway 121 and one right here. So this would, this would lead to the Vista Ridge Mall Drive, which they're not connecting into.
So this is next to that doctor's office they just completed now?
Yes, sir, it's, it's a couple of lots to the west.
To the west, and that's where the truck will enter?
Yes, sir. Right here, and then potentially right here and up here.
Oh, three different spots?
Yes, sir.
I see, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Neves?
Hey, Matt, thank you for the presentation. It was a very good. Can you talk to me a little bit more about the traffic study and the, the D cell lanes? Concern there, obviously, with, you know, potential 18-wheelers coming through there, and I know that that's an area where people are trying to merge onto 121, so.
Right.
Can you give me a little bit more background on that?
Mike Garza?
Oh, yeah, got to bring the big gun in, this is a good question.
Right. So those service roads are owned and operated by the Tech Dot, and so the TIA will be passed along to Tech, Tech Dot as they go through the permital process through Tech Dot, because those driveways are accessing Tech Dot. And so based off the TIA, the D cell lanes aren't required, but that'll be really up to Tech Dot to decide.
Gotcha. What, what would that process look like to, would that be addressed in the, in the development phase where they come in?
During the detailed, yep, during the detailed plan review, what, the way the process works is the, the city actually submits the permit via the developer to Tech Dot. So the city has to sign off on the permit to Tech Dot for those curb cuts or for the driveways off of the service road, and so we'll sign off on it, send the permit and plans to Tech Dot, and they'll determine what, what's needed at that point. Prior to that, they will have conversation, the engineer of record for the plans will have conversations with Tech Dot on what is actually going to be needed, so it's not going to be a surprise.
Okay.
Once we go through a detailed plan review.
I just bring that up just because I, and I know it's residential, I know it's different, but, you know, we've got on the south, southbound, or the northbound side, on the, the south side of the highway.
Correct.
We have the issues with the, with the residential turn-ins and the need for D cell lanes and things like that, so just, it's just top of mind, I understand this is a completely different project, but, you know, obviously with 18-wheeler traffic, that, this is a concern in my opinion.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Council, any other questions? Councilmember Hill?
Yes, Mr. Steer, I had a question regarding the screening of the rooftop equipment. Was that waiver only for lot one or was it for the two and three?
It was, it was listed for all, all of the lots.
Okay, because I understand that lot one, that's a.
But, but it was.
50-foot-high building. You're probably not going to see any kind of roof, rooftop equipment, but on two and three, I mean, probably two-story building?
Right, yeah, those are both two-story buildings and they're required to screen it from the right-of-way. So the exception was just the adjacent lots, to screen it from the adjacent lots, and so to the west, you have a vacant tract, so, and then to the east, you have the batch plant, and so they weren't requesting to screen it from those two. They were just, just going to screen it from the right-of-way and any potential residential.
Okay, but as you said, those are vacant lots, we don't know what's going to become of those.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Matthew?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One more question. Opposite of this lot is the Magnolia Park Canal, and there's a water coming from 121 area. Any water will be coming from this area, stormwater through that canal?
The only reason I know this is because I asked Mike specifically about this before the meeting, so.
He's ready to go.
Are you, you want to come down? Yeah, he can probably articulate it a little bit better than I could.
So this particular lot does not go to Magnolia, this goes through the West Haven neighborhood, which, there's a, there's an existing drainage channel that runs through there where it, where it goes today, and that's exactly where it'll, it'll continue to go in the same spot.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions? I believe you said that the applicant had a presentation?
Yes, sir.
B C 6059 Walnut Hill Circle, Dallas, Texas 75230. We can go through this if y'all want, but frankly, we're just here to answer questions and help facilitate a conversation. I have Dan Gallagher here with Kelly Horn, and then Bill Osprey with Jackson Walker as well, so I'll let them take any other questions y'all have. So we can open the floor to questions.
All right, council, any questions? Councilmember Walker?
I was just going to pick up on what Councilmember Hill was asking about. Given the fact that we don't know what's going to be developed to the west and the east of the property, is it, is it not possible to simply put the rooftop screening in a way that would obscure the rooftop equipment from those directions as well?
Yes, so we absolutely can do that. The concern is just screening behind the building, because that, that affects how our downspouts operate and affects the actual structural of the building. So if you want something to the east and west, we can include that in as an amendment. That's something that's important to y'all.
Okay, but there's a, there's a functional concern if we were to wrap it all the way around?
Yeah, all the way around, that's correct, yes.
Well, but the, the north, on the north side of lot two and three, those buildings, you're saying that that's.
So I'm, I'm saying for lot one on the industrial building, if you were to put it on the north side of that building, that's a structural concern. And then the same for on lots two and three, if you were to put something on the north side of that building, that could be a structural concern as well, and that's why we included it in that manner, but we can put it on the east to the west.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
So, okay, but of course as to lot two and three, the north side of that building would, would face the warehouse, which would be a much taller structure, so that wouldn't be, on an aesthetic basis, that wouldn't be quite the concern there, but I think the east and west would be.
Yep, I understand, yeah, that we can, we can do that, we don't need to screen the northern part of lot two and three from the warehouse.
Okay, thank you very much.
Council, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Matt, that was fantastic.
This is a public hearing, although nobody signed up, so we'll skip that section of the, of the presentation. Council, this is back to you. Any comments or motion? Councilmember Walker?
I would just ask that if the motion to approve is made, that it includes conditions that the screening be included on both the east and west side of lots two and three.
I would invite you to make such a motion.
Okay, well, then I would move to close the public hearing and move to approve item eight, PD 312-HC, the Levitt-Cappell Business Park, subject to staff conditions and the additional condition that the rooftop screening would be provided on both the east and west sides of lots two and three.
Thank you, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hill. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Neves?
Councilmember Walker, just to clarify, you don't want screening on lot one, east and west side, on the taller building, I just want to make sure.
It was my understanding that they were providing screening on that all but the north side.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Walker, Keena Hostess Smith, Carol Neves, Matthew Hill, in favor, none of post-motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 is our city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. Mr. Lian?
Mayor, thank you. This evening, just an update, the Duck Pond project is on schedule and 75% complete. Suite Park is basically complete. On South Beltline, the paving has started at the Hackberry intersection. The Village Parkway pump station, the final testing of the generator is going on this week, and Dart has more road closed as well. And as far as anything out of the work session this evening, we will be bringing a rate ordinance to the council on December 12th for water and sewer rates. That's it.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. The city of Capel will once again sponsor the special holiday program called Make a Child Smile. This annual program benefits children living within the Capel city limits or attending CISD by providing holiday gifts for families that need a little extra help. Selections for sponsorship can be made virtually between November 1st and the 30th by visiting Purchase gifts of clothing and toys for the children and return the wrapped and labeled gifts to the city manager's office at Town Center by December 1st with the ornament and information attached. The goal is to provide at least one toy or one article of clothing for each child. City employees will deliver the gifts prior to Christmas. Should you have any questions, please contact Crystal Patinas in the city manager's office at 972-304-3668, or by email at cpatinas@capeltx.gov. The city of Capel encourages all residents to shop small this holiday season and make the commitment to support local retailers and join the city of Capel for Small Business Saturday on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 25th. Residents who visit three or more small businesses in Capel on Small Business Saturday and submit their receipts will be entered to win a $200 prize. Receipts be, can be submitted in person at the Town Center, annex at 265 East Parkway, or email to ed, that's E D at capeltx.gov. Item number 14, council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is a report on the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition by Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, a report, what we've been covering over the last quarter or so, certainly the, the legislative session has ended in Austin, plus some special sessions, we have had a number of people come and speak to us, including Senator Nathan Johnson out of District 16, out of Dallas, last session, and Senator Kelly Hancock will be at the next session, out of District 9, to give us some insight into what has been going on in Austin. We've also had Blake Calvert, who is the Transportation Budget and Policy Advisor from the Office of the Governor, Office of Governor Abbott, has come and visited with us, as well as two deputy executive directors from Tech Dot, Brian Barth and Brandy Hendrickson, have come and given us some insight into the new UTP, which is the Unified Transportation Program that has been approved in Austin. And just to give you an idea, so this UTP is sort of the 10-year guidance that the state uses for transportation infrastructure, to give you an idea of how large that has become. Last year, the UTP was approximately $85 billion, this year it's about $100 billion, so that's how much additional revenue has been added to the UTP. And then if you add things such as routine maintenance contracts and development costs into the total cost into infrastructure in this state over the next 10 years, it's estimated to be potentially about $142 billion. So that gives you an idea of how large, how fortunate this state is from a transportation standpoint and revenue standpoint, but how large that has, had has become. The letting process, which is, you know, giving the contracts for construction projects every year, it has grown just over the last 10 years from about $6 billion a year for the state to a little over $12 billion this coming year, so that shows how much activity there is, and clearly, a lot of the activity is focused on the 12 primary counties of, where all the population growth is in, is, is in this state, and where that, that type of infrastructure is, is very much needed. So that gives a summary on the, on UTP from this last session. The other thing I do want to mention, many mayors of cities in the metroplex have recently petitioned the Regional Transportation Council to engage in a study of the metroplex transit strategy. Forty years ago, Dart was established, and cities have been added to Dart, as well as there are partnerships with DCTA, the Fort Worth Transportation Authority, but over time, things change, and so there are many mayors, including our esteemed mayor from Capel, that has, has asked RTC to engage in a study of what does the next 40 years need to look like from a regional standpoint and get a fresh look, and that's going to include sources of revenue, it's going to include who will participate, because at the moment, there are certainly communities that don't participate in a lot of the, the regional transportation, so who will participate and who, well, will Acosta can participate, but the RTC will be engaged in that type of study to give sort of a fresh look for the future. So that's a little bit that's been going. So that's a little bit that's been going on in transportation recently. Thanks.
Just a little bit, huh?
Just a little bit, it's a brief summary.
Thank you very much. Item number 15, public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do have one comment, the, the city council and city staff was invited to the Encore Operations Center on Monday to view their, to view their operations center and see how they work. This is a center that, that handles storm-related outages as well as just normal operations, and I had no idea the extent of their operation. They are set up to handle everything from, as they put it, your, your power meter coming off your wall on a routine day to the worst of storms, such as what we experienced in February of 2021. It's very educational, this is part of our council's ongoing goal to provide better power utility to the city, and this was part of our understanding of, of what's going on behind the scenes. This is going to be a continuing effort, and we're, we're not done with it yet. Any, anybody have anything to add to that? Councilmember Nevels?
No, Mayor, I definitely echo those thoughts. You know, I think the biggest thing that, that I want to communicate to the citizens of the, of the city is that there were several council members that were there, as well as city staff, as you said, and we were going there with the purpose of learning and understanding, and, you know, when, when a citizen, you know, reaches out to us with issues or concerns about their power delivery, we are listening and we're doing our best to try to learn, you know, from Encore and learn from that group, so we can better communicate and just, I know we're putting a plan together for even, you know, a little bit more citizen action and citizen engagement in that process, so I really look forward to seeing those communication pieces go out, but I think the more we learn and the more we understand about what Encore does in the area, it's going to help us be better partners and just increase that relationship, so very grateful they allowed us to come out.
For example, one of the things that we learned was that, and there had been a move to look into burying power lines to make it more efficient and more reliable. Well, according to Encore's data, that's not necessarily always the case, and so that was kind of a revealing. We also found out that the city of Capel has a failure rate of, or a service time interruption of .63. Encore's average is .74. The state of Texas has an average of 1.5, and nationally, it's 1.2, so we're three times better than the state and roughly two and a half times better than the national average, so.
Lower the better.
And lower is better, so .5 is, is really, really very good, and that relates to how long it takes to power to come back on. There's lots of statistics and lots of numbers we learned, and we're still digesting what we did see. So, thank, thank you, councils, thank you city staff for attending, and our goal, like I said, is to make our power reliability system better for all of our citizens. Item number 16 is necessary action from the executive session, there was none, so moving on, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:26 PM.